Okay, we're on the air.
December tenth, thirteenth, thirteenth, meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at seven thirty-seven.
Announcements? Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin web board website and website, and by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel Newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten-thirty PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Number three, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. For pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Committeeman Ray is excused this evening. Committeeman Verlezza is currently absent. Ms. Still is excused this evening. Mr. Hands?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
We're going to skip past meeting minutes tonight in the interest of time. And the next item on the agenda, oh, just an announcement, for those of you who are not in the audience, you can't see the fact that there's nobody in the audience tonight. So there will not be questions taken from the audience. Future meetings and hearing schedule, just to catch everybody up on where we're at. This is our last regular meeting of the year. There was a special meeting called for next Tuesday, the twentieth. That meeting has been canceled. The hearing that was scheduled, that's the Gates Avenue subdivision, is rescheduled to February fourteenth, and there will be additional notices.
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day?
We may have more important business.
Oh, it's Valentine's Day.
Meeting on Valentine's Day?
Listen, you guys chose, we don't have to choose that date if you don't want to. The dates have not been confirmed yet for twenty twenty-three.
Bring your loved ones to the meeting.
Yes. So if you...
We just love planning.
Listen, I just put the dates out there. You guys still have to vote on them, so nothing is set in stone.
Change that puppy.
The, there will be a meeting of the zoning board on January third. You are all invited to attend that meeting because the zoning board will hold an executive session for the purpose of interviewing engineering candidates, and we are all invited to join in that meeting. It'll be just like a joint meeting in our normal interviewing process, except that for legal reasons, it won't be a joint meeting, it'll be a zoning board meeting. And if any of you have any questions about that, let me know. Our intention is to recommend an engineer before the end of the night and to approve contracts at our reorganization meeting on January tenth. And that's the only business that I have tonight other than the report of the master plan committee, for which I will introduce committee chairman.
One more business, right, before, firstly, two things. Can you just, you'll send out a meeting note before January third, just to remind us?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And do we have to do nominating committee at some point?
A nominating, a nominating committee for...
Board positions for next year.
Officers for next year.
That's what we normally do, don't we, in the last meeting?
Generally, yes, we could do that tonight.
All right, good. Do you want to do that now or...
Just to soon do that now, and then we'll wrap up.
I was gonna say, to be quite honest, the last couple of years, the board hasn't done this only because you've come with nominations.
Right.
So, but it's up to you. You can definitely do a committee if you wish, or you can just come on the reorg with nominations ready.
Uh, whichever.
It's up to the board.
I think.
So our reorganization meeting is what date?
January tenth.
January tenth, that's the week after the zoning.
It's, yeah, four weeks from tonight.
It's up to you, I mean, do you think we need a committee?
No.
We don't?
No, no, we don't have to have one.
It's not necessary because when, when...
From the floor, right?
Correct. So when I'm going through the procedures, then we, I will open up the floor to nominations for each position.
All right, that's good enough to me.
Okay.
The reason that I'm not going to rush into a nominating committee is because Brendan is normally chairs that committee and has for the past many years, and he is not here tonight. I don't want to commit him into that.
Right. Okay.
I will suggest to him that if he wants to organize an ad hoc group, he's welcome to do that.
Yep.
I can't do it officially in his absence. Okay, Don?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to first do before we get into the document is, is just provide a very brief overview of where we are in the process now that we've achieved the milestone of the end of the year. And then talk a little bit tonight about what I'd like to see are the ground rules and just the process to work on this document. So I guess first, just in regards to what we've completed thus far, for the board's recollection and for the public, goals and recommendations for each of the elements that are in this draft have already been largely discussed and vetted over the course of the year. And now, what we have before us tonight is a first rough draft of all of that information pulled together into a single document. And then in addition, a number of sections that have been added to complement the goals and recommendations in each of these elements, and required other information that Liz will talk about tonight that are now required to be at least acknowledged in the master plan. We'll talk a little bit about the, how specificity, the specificity of some of those, that information has to be in this particular document or not. We can debate some of that. What we plan to do is review this first rough draft tonight, and then look at subsequent drafts in this workshop form. So we are not ready for public comment yet. So I envision that we may have a couple of meetings as we work through now with very vigilant document control, information that we collect on this draft as we build upon this draft and improve this document, to then be released for, as in a final draft form for then public comment. I'm envisioning that would happen somewhere in the February, March timeframe based on, and subject to our meeting schedule and the deliberations that ensue.
And the production problems.
And, exactly. So the, the overall goal obviously is we have to complete this process in twenty twenty-three. I envision that, and my hope is that we can move through this process and complete it in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. But again, largely that's going to be dependent on, on how things go. Tonight, the ground rules that I've discussed with, and worked through with the master plan committee as we bring this draft to the board is that I'm going to turn this over, and Liz is going to help guide us through and provide an overview of some of the newer additions. These are parts of this document that we really haven't seen or seen for the first time. Hopefully, you've all been had a chance to review the document, at least familiarize yourself with the document. But Liz will highlight some of the newer additions that were added to construct this master plan draft. Tonight, we are looking for substantive constructive feedback. We recognize that there are typos in this document. We recognize that there are things that we can do to improve grammatically, formats, all kinds of different things. I'm sure we're dying to dive in and correct a comma on page fifty and section sixteen. That's not what we're here to do tonight. Tonight is going to be a substantive constructive feedback with regards to this document and its contents and the concepts that we're putting forward. We are going to collect comments on draft documents that we've released. I would encourage you to scan these documents, and that Liz will then be the collector of this information through scanned documents. Rather than trying to get track change documents and other files that could get confused again for document control. Liz has the com, as they say in the military. And it's important that we really maintain clear document control as we collect a lot of feedback in this process to improve on this document. The goal for this committee on the first draft is we're going to have a discussion tonight, and then you're to return by the end of the month your hard copy comments in a scanned form to Liz. So that should give you ample time to read through after the discussion tonight, make various adjustments, and collect that information in a scanned document form again by the end of the year. And then the new draft, we hope we would have an opportunity to release that new draft. I'm suggesting it be in kind of a track change format so that we can see where modifications have been made, but we'll have to see the level of comments and, and how to actually navigate that. But the goal would be is to have a second rough draft for people's consideration before we meet next. Most likely in either the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February, depending on hearing schedule, Mr. Chairman. Okay? Any questions on that process and that proposed approach?
One quick question. So, so we'll give you hard copy comments before the end of the year?
Yeah, in a scanned form, so.
Scan to me means I write it and give it to Deb.
Whoever can scan. We'll, we'll leave it up to you as to if you can scan it yourself.
So.
Or give it to someone to scan.
Is Deb, is that okay? I'll just hand you my written notes?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great, perfect. Any other questions? Yes?
I'd like to make a statement, if I may. I'm in a minority here tonight because two-thirds of the people sitting here have been on the master plan committee, and only two of us have not seen this draft until this week. And I would like to give you an overall impression. Now, I was a part of the master plan committee for four years, starting in two thousand fourteen. And then, when it came time to do the master plan in January of this year, to have a master plan committee on the planning board, I chose not to involve myself because I sort of had gotten tired of it about four or five years ago when I left the township's master plan committee. So I'm viewing this from a distance, and here's what I see. I see that over a period of eight years, we've had three planning consultants participate in this process on and off. And I say on and off because there was a time when we didn't have any money to pay a planning consultant, so we got along without one. Or maybe we didn't actually get along very well without one. But my impression in reading this is that the planning consultant that we have working on this now has raised this thing to the level of an art form. I am seeing stuff in here that I never expected to see, that I know we were incapable of producing on our own, and which apparently was not produced for us by the two previous consultants who participated. And so, just a little morale boosting speech. Thank you very much, Liz, for all you have contributed here. But don't expect a rebuttal.
Yeah, no, thank you, Dennis. That's very kind of you. I really appreciate it. And there was a lot of good work done, which will, you know, the, the biggest change, the biggest addition is the land use element. And that was also based on, really, a lot of the recommendations are based on recommendations that had been done way before I even heard of Long Hill. What is, what was added were the existing conditions, you know, what, what the assessment was of the existing conditions, and what things that have changed in, you know, let's say, the last sort of full, sorry, I'm sitting on my hands because I'm freezing.
It's cold in here, actually.
Not alone.
And the reason that I know it looks like a real master plan is because it's got Liz's name on the bottom of every page.
But no, but a lot of, there was, you know, there's been some significant changes since the last land use element was drafted, fully drafted, which has gone into, you know, in here in a lot of detail. And I think, you know, that this has to do with affordable housing. This has to do with the hazard, you know, resiliency.
Vulnerability.
Vulnerable, like, oh, call it wrong, oh, every time. The hazard vulnerability has to do with, you know, e-commerce that I think wasn't touched upon in the twenty sixteen draft, and, and the COVID, you know, that these are some significant things that have happened in the last, or even actually, to be honest, even since topology was, was involved, you know, some of these things. For example, the, the climate section wasn't a requirement when they were working on it. That's something that only came, became a requirement in twenty twenty-one. So the other thing that I added, and I did it really based on your nineteen ninety-six master plan, but also the, the Morris County recently released a land use element which had a significant amount of demographics. And so I tried to follow along with what they did, but make it specific to Long Hill. And, but, you know, I, I understand that some of it is interesting, but not, you know, you know, not necessarily relevant, or maybe you kind of are like, well, that's interesting, but who, who cares? And so we sort of stuck, or I stuck it in the appendix. There are probably a lot of things in here that could be consolidated and put in an appendix. I want to get the information in there in some way, just because, I'll tell you, for me, I spent a lot of time looking at previous plans that Long Hill's done.
Right.
You know, nineteen ninety-six, two thousand four, all these, you know, in iterations, and including through, you know, what topology had done. And it's helpful for me, as a, as a consultant coming in, to understand why certain decisions were made. And so that's kind of why I think I erred on the side of putting in too much information in terms of like, okay, here's, here's the seventy-five reasons why we think we should do this. But I do think that information is helpful to have in some capacity, even if it's not in the heart of the document.
All right, can I just have one comment?
Yeah, so let, let, just, let's just come back to kind of framing out. I think, again, Liz, you mentioned a couple of things. I think it would be helpful in a minute to just go right to some of the newer sections
Sure.
in the document, just to at least highlight those. I'm not expecting everybody to have totally observed this.
I'm gonna have to first add a comment.
Sure.
I would say a lot, lot of this context, and it was all good, fresh, especially new sections.
Hold on a second. Are we? Are we not, uh?
Nope.
Yeah, okay.
So just, as I say...
Sorry, David. Well, so...
Just additional comment. There's some new sections, absolutely, from the last, over the last year, or last six months, really, to be honest. Also, some, a lot of the information we have looked at before. I want to recognize all the work that was done in the past. And a lot of the sections is verbatim from the work that was done previously. I think of the sustainability element, almost a verbatim to the work that was done in the past. So please do not discredit the work that was done in the past and all the hard work that was done by many volunteers in many meetings, fifty-six meetings during COVID. So I do not want to lose sight of that. So I want that to go on record. There's a lot of verbatim work taken from the work that's been done over the many past few years, and some good ads and reorganization data. So I appreciate that.
Just to mention, I mean, this is a true collaborative and culmination document, right? I mean, this is really, I think, to put a, a quick statement on that, and I appreciate that, David, for bringing that acknowledgement. that, David, for bringing that acknowledgement up of all the hard work of the volunteers that have put their efforts in. But now it's really incredibly helpful to have a planner such as yourself, Liz, to help us bring it all to fruition.
And I should have said that maybe more upfront, but really where I did most of my work was the land use element.
Yes, exactly.
You know, the other stuff was really, had been already hashed out. So not sure where to go from there.
Well, I think, I think to just jump into it, I mean, I think to, to jump into where are and where can you highlight for the planning board, some of the newer things? I think this whole introduction, a good portion of this introduction had been already published and we had reviewed.
Correct, and I think.
And within the goal setting.
Exactly. What is a master plan? I think that had been in there.
Right.
The planning process was essentially, had already been in there to a certain extent. Then, of course, the elements of the master plan is sort of self-explanatory. And then the goals and objectives chapter, those are all goals and objectives that we had already reviewed.
I mean, and, and just on a substantive level, I just want to highlight that, you know, these were the elements that we decided that we want, we settled upon with regards to the required elements, which are the goal element, the introduction, and the land use, and then these other, we'll call them more ancillary elements. Any questions on that? Because that's critical, that we haven't missed anything, that the planning board was expecting with regards to the, to the elements that we're now having and placing in this master plan.
I would propose that we hold that decision until we see the entire document in front of us. For example, I was expecting to see the required housing element.
Which we have addressed in a meeting now, Mr. Chairman.
You have sidestepped the issue of the housing element. There is a great deal of disagreement about whether or not we should publish the old element or write a new one, how that relates to the fair share settlement. I'm aware of all the ins and outs, but nonetheless, sometime between now and the date when this is finally adopted, we may or may not decide something different about the housing element. With regard to the smaller elements, the non-required elements, again, the decisions that were made in the three sessions that we've had since June were on the basis of fragmentary information. We need to see how that all plays together in a final document before we decide whether those elements should be expanded, reduced, deleted. It has to do with overlap, it has to do with cross-foot checking between the elements. So it's premature, it's premature, at this point, Don, I think it's premature to lock in the chapters.
I hear, I hear you, but the methodology, again, just to remind you that we used was to put the skeleton together first, and that was to put goals, recommendations of each of the elements. So we've really already, as a master plan committee and as a board, seen how the skeletal structure of this looks before we put the meat on the bone, so to speak. So, that, that was deliberate.
Yes, and you know, speaking of skeletons, what a skeleton of a horse looks like after it's been put together by a committee? It looks like a camel. And, and so, I would like, I want, I would like to see the entire document all together, all cross-checked, ready to go, and then look for redundancies or omissions before we decide on what is actually published. In particular, I would like to resolve the issue of the housing element.
Okay, and duly noted.
Liz dances around the housing element by repeating it and correcting it in the land use element. But we need to be clear whether that's exactly the way we want to go and just exactly how we want to reference the 2018 housing element. And I think it's premature to try to make that decision now.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. Our decision here was to not have that as part of the master plan, but subject to change. I think we do need to get counsel from the town attorney with regards to helping us make that decision. It is, I think there are legal implications, et cetera. So I think we need to go through that process.
We've been down that road before, and I'm willing to go down that road again.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sooner or later, we're going to get to our destination.
Right. So, Liz, I'm just kind of moving us through the documents. So where do we pick up some of the newer sections here?
I would like to start on page one.
No, I, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I want to go through and highlight the sections that are new. I don't think there's anything new on page one. So, Liz, could I turn it back over?
Sure, so, right, the, going through, really, the new stuff begins on chapter three. That is the preamble. The goals and objectives of the land use plan are things you've already seen. Do you have a problem with the cover? No.
I have a problem with page one, but if you want to skip over that, we'll bring it up the next time.
Is it a substantive comment that is helpful? How can I say that any other way? Is, is, is this a substantive comment or a typo comment?
It's a, it's a substantial comment.
Okay, please give it to us.
I would like to see the date 2022 removed throughout the document, just in case this falls into some alien hands two or three years from now, and they're wondering whether this is a 2022 document or a 2023 document.
Right, it, it is a draft and it had been stamped draft, at least the versions that I had.
All right, move on.
So, but.
Also, I just want to, I had taken our name off the cover that somehow didn't.
If this is going to say November 2022 on the front page, then it should say draft. If it's not going to say draft, then it should say 2023, and consistently throughout.
Okay, duly noted. Next. Draft.
No, that, that's fine.
Yeah, and we could, we could, Liz, to make it even more clear, we could set up a header system on each page to just show draft.
And for some reason, page two doesn't say November, it says December.
And we should keep, and we should keep track of the version.
All right, just make your notes.
Yes, yes.
Those are hard copy suggestions.
I'm going home.
So, all right, so chapter three is really where it picks up. Like I said in my preamble, and I've had some conversations.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are we going to totally skip over chapter one and two?
Dennis, we're trying to go through just sections that were added new. We can come back to specific comments with time. I want to highlight.
I believe that since we're seeing this all in one package, that every section is worthy of accepting comments.
Dennis, you're missing the point. The process that we're trying to go through is we've seen a lot of the stuff that is in these other sections. We want to discuss because it's the first time you will have seen other sections. Liz is going to help highlight where some of those new sections are for our information.
So stand me, correct me if I'm wrong, this new stuff that you're going to introduce to us and show us is, so that's our takeaway homework assignment to take through to the end of the year where we make our hard card, hard copy changes and then submit them to Liz for interpretation.
You can make, you can make comments on any section. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to.
But for tonight, we're doing the highlight of the new, so that way we're now being introduced and having discussions.
And then if there's time, we'll go back through each of the page by page and section comments.
So my suggestion is let's let the planning board, I'm sorry, the master plan committee take the point on this.
Okay, Liz, we keep interrupting, so if we could go back to the section three.
Yeah, so with chapter three, essentially, you know, it has the introduction of everything that's going to go, has to go into the land use element, because of course, the land use element is really kind of the most important. It's the one thing you really need, that's the one thing, you need to have zoning. Of course, all what goes into a land use element is very dry. So the first page is quite dry. The goals and objectives are things that you've seen, existing land use and zoning maps. Now, those are things, and I, I really appreciate that Dennis took the time and looked, and I'd ask everyone to do that, because a lot of this information is from the county. I made changes when I saw an obvious error, but there are others.
I was going to ask you where you got the maps and stuff from.
Yeah, so it's, it's county data mostly.
I'll take a deep look.
And so, you know, they don't always have a great parcel by parcel, you know, sense of what's going on.
Can we cross-check these parcels to our local information? I'm looking at Deb and Dennis, who would probably know the answer to this. Do we have good updated GIS mapping for the town on the parcel by parcel zoning?
That would be an engineering question. I don't have access to GIS, but I, the answer is probably no, but I would have to confirm with the engineer.
Or are they using the county data and then just making adjustments accordingly? Because the county is where most municipalities get their base data layers. Just because it's free.
I can send it, I can find out and let you know. So what's the question that I'm asking?
So the specific question, right, Liz, would be, does the town have specific parcel level information in a GIS format that, that Liz and her firm could cross-reference as they're assembling these figures? To reconcile some of the things that Mr. Sandow saw seemed to be off. I saw the same thing, some interesting shading of certain parcels that didn't make sense. The county data is going to be as accurate as the input of the county data, and I would think the town should be able to reconcile that. Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense.
Would you like an answer to that, or would you like to leave the question hanging?
No, well, I was waiting. I directed that question to either you or Deb, so Deb answers.
The town's zoning map is based on the county GIS base, which is the same base that Liz used. That's not anything that we have. We just use it, and the last time it was done was four years ago, was the last time we touched that database. I don't know if the town engineer still has it or what shape it is in. In terms of new information, the only new information on it, the only add, the only added value is the zoning. The, the color scheme of the zoning, which Liz has already picked up on. The tax map is not on GIS. It's all, well, it's on CAD, but it's manual operation, carried over from years back and poorly fitted every time it's revised every five years or so.
Right.
But the answer is I don't think you're going to find any information by querying around the town, looking for GIS information. At one time, we were going to do that. That was maybe 10 or 12 years ago, but we were so far down in the county's priority list of helping us get started if we gave it up.
Well, listen, you know, again, we'll do our best to produce as accurate a map as possible, but it's somewhat garbage in, garbage out. GIS is just a database, and if there's something wrong in the database, unless it's reconciled, it will just continue to be perpetuated.
It's a moment of time as well, right?
Right, it's a snapshot in time, so.
We do know that, we do know that the, the lot lines on the database, that the county generated many years ago, time unknown, source unknown, they took our manual tax maps and transposed the lot lines onto the GIS database. It is not accurate.
Yeah, no.
In some cases, it's been, it's off by 50 feet or so.
Right.
Not serious for this purpose.
No, especially at the scale that most of these maps are, that's somewhat irrelevant. All right, I think we've got our answer. Thank you. Liz, continue.
Sure, so, this is, again, this is something that I struggled with and had some conversations with Don, but there were certain overarching issues that I wanted to convey that got at some of the reasons, that applied to all the residential districts or all the non-residential districts. And again, this may be better suited for an appendix, but, you know, it's important. I think like the sewer ban is, is critical to understanding what's happened in Long Hill since 1996, because, you know, all the projections that were done, et cetera, are kind of, don't make any sense because none of them came true, because there was not, you know, you couldn't have the, you couldn't have the type of development that people thought was going to happen in the 90s.
So what's the appendix going to cover, do you think?
So this is, and this is something that I'm still wrestling with, and I, any ideas I'm open to, which is initially I had put all of this at its own chapter. You know, like, here's everything, here's, here's things that you need to, to look at, which is the sewer ban, the affordable housing requirements, you know, things having to do with like electric vehicle charging stations. All these things have come into play in recent years, and you, they impact what kind of recommendations we're making. And so, that would be one, that's one option. It's just sort of comes, put it all together.
So a lot of the stuff, but the material that here, you put that independence.
Kind of put that there.
Yeah, it's not that we lose it, it's just, you think about it by taking a step back in the flow of the document.
How much?
This is, this is an 80-some page, just land use element. So are, it's really strategies to extract what we deem to be maybe not as relevant information that affects the flow of the story we're trying to tell and the plan we're trying to promote.
That's fine.
And use an appendix to capture that information, because we don't want to lose that information if somebody wants to read further than the appendix.
But the sort of, just to be clear, I mean, it's only a half a page, sewer ban.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, but I think all the, all the.
No, 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 I know, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, affordable housing's a page. Independently, that's good, and I will keep it upfront.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Right, because it's a page. Now, when your other stuff, we're getting to that as we go through.
Yeah.
I would say, yes, consolidate some of this stuff as additional, but it's a core. If it weren't core, maybe.
Yeah.
But, and it's, I, I would leave them, personal opinion. I'd leave those here.
Okay.
Because I think they are fundamental to the story.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, that's, as a committee, we kind of agreed that it didn't interrupt the flow. I'm really more talking to the whole board in regards to kind of our rationale for keeping these sections, how we kept them.
Then, again, there is in this beginning part of chapter three, you know, bullet points on changing demographics, and it references, again, that appendix that is more comprehensive look at the demographics.
We're on page one dash five, correct?
Yeah, I have a point.
In, in section three.
Okay, go ahead.
Which, by the way, the page numbering.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got it, we got it.
It got completely screwed when I added line numbers.
We got it. I, I appreciate the line numbers more than, than the page numbers, so, but go ahead.
Here's my issue with the population. Like we said, population is expected to grow. Population is expected to grow in coming decades, but at a slower rate than the past. Then I think, okay, good. But on the other hand, we've got affordable housing, it's going to bump up our population at a rate that we had never seen in the past. So I don't think that thought has been extracted out deeply enough in here.
Yeah, and, and really, I can look more at the appendix and sort of provide a little bit more substantiation, because I think the kinds of numbers and the population growth that Long Hill saw in the 80s and 90s is, is greater, at a greater rate.
No, no, it won't be affordable housing, we're talking about.
And the sewer ban being lifted.
Affordable housing, how many units we've got coming up, it's almost like 10% population growth.
Yeah, but it doesn't have, it doesn't hold a candle to what was happening in the 70s here and this stuff.
I don't know, it might disagree a little bit. However, but that's my, my, my point. I don't want to debate that point. The bigger point for me is that's not necessarily a true statement, and it doesn't reflect affordable housing impact.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Are we still getting a high-level overview of what's new in this section? Or are we down in the dirt discussing specifics?
Well, we're talking about this section about demographics, which is a new section.
Would, would you like additional comments specific to that section at this time, or do you want to defer that to later?
Substantive comments, absolutely. If it's editorial, we can punt it.
Well, you see, you're at line 158, and I got comments on the first 157 lines that we've skipped over, so I'm not clear just exactly how you're.
What's your comment, and I'll decide if it's substantive.
Should I finish my comment, or do we finish with my comment?
Yes, I, we got, I think we captured your comment about.
Did you go with that?
You're ta- just to summarize, you're talking about that there's, it, there's an incongruity between potentially the affordable housing goals and our demographic population projections.
Correct, I think we need.
And we just need to reconcile that and make sure we're consistent. Okay, that's, thank you.
Last point, last.
Consensus from the Census Bureau?
Yeah, I think we can get that. I mean, we got a lot of this from the county.
That against the Census Bureau?
Yeah, we had the numbers from the prior work we've done as well.
It's in the appendix.
Okay, okay.
And la- last quick point, consider also the type of person, now we're going into more rental. So it's more transients, it's not necessarily your buy and stay, families of the past, that may have a consequence. There's something just to back in mind to think about, does that, does that have a consequence that we should be thinking about?
Well, keep in mind, a lot of the trend in some of the more urban areas is people to stay in rental. That it's home ownership isn't necessarily a goal.
Maybe so.
And not necessarily, uh, a certainty for non-transients either, so. Mr. Sandow, did you have a?
You know, I have comments on page one dash five on, on the demographics, if you're interested in them.
Yes, please.
The population is expected to grow, line one sixty-two.
That's what we've been just talking.
Population's expected to grow in coming decades, but at a slower rate than in the past. Well, in the past, for the past two censuses, sensai.
Sensai.
In the past two censuses, had a decrease of population. So I'm not sure how the word grow at a slower rate applies since we haven't been growing.
Yeah, I think what it meant, what I meant was prior to the turn of the millennium. You know, that in the sixty-seventies, there were huge growth.
Well, you know, you, there are ways of saying it. And, and I'm not sure that it's expected to grow other than because we're gonna build more high-density housing.
Well, it, again, this goes to the appendix. Uh, what I use, what a lot of, uh, you know, common thing that planners will use is the, um, the NJDPA, which is the.
But if I take a twenty-year trend line, it's gonna get down to zero pretty soon.
Why?
But then that, that.
With the twenty-year trend line, it shows a decrease in population.
No, no, I know, but the, the NJDPA does project that there's gonna be growth in Long Hill. It's just not gonna be the huge leaps.
Yeah, but I, you know, it's easy to pre- to predict growth or lack of growth. The question is, do we know the factors that went into that so-called prediction? I've seen factors, I've seen predictions of growth as high as, uh, twelve thousand, which is a fifty percent increase in the current population. I've, it, by, by the year twenty thirty. And in fact, we have used that number, not us, but other departments have used that number. I need to know what is the basis of the projection. And, and otherwise, I would not use the word grow at a slower rate than in the past. Because that's not what's happened in the past.
Yeah, well, but that, but that's it. The sewer ban also really threw a wrench in what people projected, certainly in the last twenty years. But I understand what you're saying. I don't particularly like projections, because there are lots of things that you, that can go wrong. You know, that all of a sudden, things change, you've got COVID, so then different types of housing, or you have affordable housing, different, and then all of a sudden, a huge, uh, development comes in.
The precise statement that I think you're looking for is something along the lines of because we are obligated to encourage new housing, we can li- very likely expect the population to grow.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the fact for the growth. But it has nothing to do with trends, it has nothing to do with somebody else's projection.
Yeah, I think that that's a fair statement, actually, to say, to put it that way. Which I think I do at some points, but I can, I can make that clear.
Well, while we're on it, are there any other to that level?
I'm not done yet, Don, if you'd like me to finish with this page.
Yeah, no, that, I'm asking, are, are any other comments on the bullets here in the demographic summary? I'm not here, and I don't think I'm here, we're not here to debate the statistics unless you have a source that's better than what has been found.
I think it's more about the concept of the.
Right.
No, I think that was the only, that was the only issue that, that.
Yeah, I think we can all agree on these other points, population's getting older, retired population has grown. School age has dropped. Average household size has decreased, fewer people living in Long Hill as compared to the county.
That paragraph does need clarification, though.
I'm sorry?
That, that paragraph does need clarification.
Which one?
Going further along, down the road. The fewer people live in Long Hill as compared to the county.
Live alone.
Yeah, well, uh, this is wordsmithing, so I, I just wanted to point out that.
Well, let's, let's talk about that just for a second. I'll get back to you, Dennis, go ahead. Liz, just on the live.
You know what, part of it is trying to distill like a twenty-five page appendix into like
Right, right.
Half a page bullet points. And so, a lot, maybe the context is not that great, but if something really, like what you're saying, it really doesn't make sense out of context. Then let me know, and I can.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, the statement is supportive of that this is a family-oriented community, correct? That, that you, we're not, uh, uh, I, I'll call it an inner ring town to a city where you're gonna have a lot of independent people living alone. Like a Morris Town, or even, you know, or even closer to the city.
Talk about single occupancy here.
Right, right.
And you're gonna see a reduction of that.
To be honest, I, uh, Long Hill is a little bit of, um, outside the trend. Because most census data is showing that people living alone is increasing, like exponentially around the country.
Right.
Dennis has a comment, but, um, that's not actually the case in Long Hill. That, that really, most people are, live with other.
And we should, we should acknowledge and accommodate that. Yes, Mr. Sandow.
I'm, I, 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 I'm sorry, I feel like you guys are holding a committee meeting rather than presenting and listening to comments from the rest of us who were not in the committee. I mean, I under, I appreciate this dialogue, but this, this dialogue has already taken place, I assume.
Well, a lot of it, but you're bringing up some points and we're reviewing these points.
Over, you skipped over all the bullet points in between to get down to the bottom of the page.
No.
And I'm, I'm.
What's your comment, Dennis?
Well, if you're talking about, what line are you talking about right now?
Whatever line you want.
Huh?
Wh- whatever bullet you wanna speak to. I was just making the point that we're, we, I didn't think we had any disagreement with the, with the bold-faced headings. Like we had pointed out, the population is expected to grow. Is there, are there any other comments on any of the concepts of those bold-faced headings?
Yes, yes.
Okay, what is it?
Well, please, let me, let me finish the page then. The retired population has grown. The last sentence is irrelevant and is not a valid conclusion from the data. You're looking at the percentage of population sixteen years ol- and older, and you jump to a conclusion in the last sentence that the residents of retirement age have increased.
That I assume was.
Now, if you had, if you, if you were dealing with statistics of population sixty-five and older, that might make sense. But if you're dealing with population sixteen years and older, how do you jump to the conclusion that retired residents, retired age has increased?
Yeah, I, the, again, this is sort of pulling the, the, the certain bullet points. I do have information that the, you know, the population sixty-five and older in Long Hill has increased.
And you, and you said that in the, in the bullet above.
Yeah, and I think this is, the point of this, this conclusion was something I think I saw somewhere else, which is, you know, if you have your, your work, the people in your, the age of the workforce are increasing, but the amount of people in the workforce isn't increasing at the same amount, that that seemed to indicate that that's because these people weren't working or they were retired. Um, so, that, but I, I understand that you're saying that's like a little bit maybe, uh, not concrete.
The, the, the data, the data in that bullet does not support the conclusion in that bullet.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I, oh, in the bullet.
Within that bullet.
Yeah.
By looking at statistics of population sixteen and older, you cannot make any conclusion about retirement.
Yeah, it, but it is interesting that the population over sixteen grew by six percent, but the amount of people in the workforce didn't grow.
Right, well, yeah, but over, over a span of years, that could be college kids who have, are still looking for a job and haven't moved out of the house. It could be mother-in-laws moving in.
Why, why is this important?
It could be a lot of things, and you, and you can't deduce those things from the data.
All right, so why don't we?
Just get rid of the bullet.
Get rid of the bullet, yeah, I think that's fine.
Unless you can prove it, which I agree with Dennis's point.
Which, yeah, it might be in, it might be in the more.
Helps us then break, if not.
I disagree completely. If, 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 if we had data that, from the housing el- element or, or wherever the data came from, that can be a standalone statement, the population, retired population has grown.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I think that that's.
Fine, if, as long as you.
It should be in there.
But it shouldn't be that the data, I think what, I think what Dennis is saying is the data that's cited shouldn't be what's used to substantiate.
Understood, perfect, good, good comment, duly noted.
My last comment on this page has to do with the last paragraph. Where fewer people live in Long Hill compared to the county. And I guess we, we understand that that sentence doesn't make any sense at all.
Right.
Yeah.
But my comment there is you're dealing with a social issue. The fact that married couple family represents seventy-two percent is down from seventy-five percent, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're overloaded with singles or with widow divorcees.
Well, that's actually what I meant.
Yeah, there, the, there are, there are social issues that have happened in the past twenty years. Uh, uh, hustle queues, glibbits, all kinds of, all kinds of abbreviations of people who actually live together but are not married couple families. And I would not conclude, I would not draw any conclusion from a statistic of married couple families that the demographics are actually changing.
Uh, no, I think what I was trying to point out, and again, maybe it's using the wrong data, but the, there is the data in the appendix that fewer people live alone, there are fewer people living alone in Long Hill as a percentage.
Right.
Compared to the county, that's, you know, these things.
And that's the point, because like, we don't have the infrastructure that supports single people.
Right.
We're a married commu- we're a family community, we're not a singles community.
It's mostly single.
Morris Town is a singles community.
We also have a high proportion of single family residences.
Maybe the data isn't there, but that's the point.
You know, the, I mean, the data's there, it may just be, I pi- I picked the wrong data to show it. If that makes any sense, it's, it, but it is in the appendix.
So you're gonna re, re, rework this?
Yeah, I will rework.
All right, so we have, yeah, that, that third.
I agree with you, Dennis, there are different types of sort of households now than maybe there were. But I thought it was kinda striking, just as the country as a whole has increased in the number of people living alone. That was not the case in Long Hill.
Don, just to, just to get back on track, is this the kind of stuff we could be putting in notes that we're gonna scan?
Yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, I, I know we're got, we got kinda drawn into the specifics on this one. Again, my goal was to get through what's new and highlight to the board where comments are, but those are a couple of good comments. But you're right, we could have captured that probably in notes on a draft.
If everybody has the same notes.
Yeah, Liz will see that and.
Pay attention to.
Right.
If you're willing to stay on that page, I'd like to jump closer to the top.
Well, except Dennis, I think we're gonna just move on here, recognizing that we'll get your comments. And a lot of comments could parallel your comments in this draft, going back to Liz.
Well, you may or may not get them, and, and the fact that I have a comment doesn't necessarily mean that I'm right or wrong or that a change should be made, which is why we're bringing the comments up in this meeting for discussion.
Okay, well, again, what's, what's the comment?
Well, at line one fifty-five, I'm troubled by that sentence, it starts the next round of affordable housing from.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's something that, that.
That's very speculative, that's highly speculative.
It's not. It's not.
It's not speculative.
It, you, you're gonna have an obligation coming in twenty twenty-five.
Know that.
Yeah, it's really not.
That's about as most truthful statement I've seen.
You don't know whether the legislature, or the courts, or the fair share consortium is gonna change radically in the next three years.
I would.
You're, you're, you're afraid that that might hap- might not happen, but
I have worked.
It is speculative to make that statement. I'm not arguing that it might not happen.
Most likely be faced.
Yeah, I, I.
I'd say well.
It, it is sort of a hedge.
Just leave it alone and move on.
It is most likely, but it really is most likely.
Right, I think that's a truthful statement.
Okay, next.
All right, so, uh, Liz, maybe continue on our odyssey of new sections.
So there, again, there's more.
The EV section here. Well, there's more bullets here, but again, I, I think, as Tom has suggested, we can get comments to you in regards to the bullets as you guys read through them.
I would like to challenge the numbers in one eighty-two.
Okay. Write down your numbers, okay.
Well, it says here, the percentage of two to four family buildings increased significantly from seven percent in two thousand to thirteen percent in, in twenty twenty. That means that we had an increase of six percent, which is a hundred and eighty additional units of two to four family buildings. And I don't know where those are in Long Hill. We certainly haven't had a, anywhere near a hundred and eighty units of any sort in the past twenty years, much less a hundred and eighty units of two to four family buildings.
Yeah, so here's a que- here's something that I wanna bring up, and I should with all the census data. Is, I'm sure you're familiar with the American Community Survey, right? And a lot of what was in the long form of the decennial census, and you know, every ten years, some, like one out of every some odd homes would get like a ten-page thing, and everybody else would get one or two pages. And there was information extracted from those that were considered like a sample. So starting in, I, now I'm gonna forget the date, but post-two thousand, they started the American Community Survey, which does estimate. They, they do it all every year. And so every year, you might be called upon to answer more specific questions, but they're estimates. And it's a little bit different than what is an actual.
The census, which is a snapshot, right.
Yeah, and so it is a sample size, and sometimes I think you shouldn't compare American Community Service, survey, like, American Community Survey data with sense, decennial census data. Because, I mean, it's all done by the Census Bureau, it's all kinda comes from the same arm of the government. But the data is more estimates in twenty twen- you know, for, for the ACS. And so I agree with you, they may have done it and done a sample, you know, statistic sample, and said, this is the deal in Long Hill. But it's not based on a.
Can I just make a quick?
If you, if anybody can show me five new two to four family houses that would be the basis of this, that's fine, but a hundred and eighty is totally unreasonable. And it certainly isn't anything that we should memorialize in our master plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, but I, I think what, what's perhaps.
It isn't even a valid estimate. It's a, I could throw a dart and come up with a different number.
Take it up with the Census Bureau.
Can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
If you do do these sort of things with census, could you just do footnotes now and again, just say, this is based upon estimates from?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we know the source.
Yeah.
And if you wanna challenge it, Dennis, you just make a note here saying, I don't agree with this, and then we just, then we just.
It's all contained in appendix A.
Yeah.
Ah, the infamous.
Right in the first sentence.
Now, I know that, I, I, but, but some places it's helpful to do, do more footnotes generally.
Who never look at appendix A.
Just general comment, footnotes, for me.
Yeah, but, but I, Dennis, you raise a, a point that concerns me all the time, which is when you take estimates and compare them to the, yeah.
Census information.
I, I'd also like a clarification of, uh, second sentence, li- at line one eighty-two. It says, eight of ten homes in the township are owner occupied. I'm wondering if that is really eight of ten residential units rather than homes.
It, there's really no difference.
Well, uh, what about apartment houses?
That's a household, that's a home. Your unit, a unit in a, in an apartment building is a household or a home.
But that doesn't reconcile with the bullet point.
Clarify that in the, in the writing, please, because I read homes as single-family homes. That's the way I, that's the way I interpret that word. If you want it to mean any residential unit, then you need, you need to define it that way.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm sorry, that is true with the census, but what I meant here was eight of ten. um, of the single family detached homes, yeah.
Because with regard to single family homes, I can, I have hard statistics that, that nine percent of the single family homes are not owner occupied, which means ninety one percent, nine out of ten rather than eight out of ten.
All right, well, let's.
Yep.
Let's take a look because again, this may be comparing the American, you know, the ACS data.
And while we're on that paragraph, I'm looking at line one eighty six where you have underlined Mount Laurel. In most of the writing, you talk about fair share. Then you talk about Mount Laurel. And and what you really don't clarify is the relationship between the Fair Share Housing Center lawsuit, which is not the same as fair share, and Mount Laurel. And they're intermingled in such a way that someone who's not familiar might get confused.
Well, fair share and Mount Laurel are fairly interchangeable.
Yes.
Fair Share Housing Center is different. But when you talk about municipalities fair share, you're basically talking about a municipality's Mount Laurel application. But I I take your point, but to be consistent perhaps.
Yes.
But it is, um, they are used interchangeably.
Okay.
They're all one in the same problem, but each time you attempt to clarify one, you leave the other one hanging behind. I'm, I'm on page, introduction, page one, line twenty seven.
Yeah.
You, you first use the word fair share and there's no citation as to what that refers to.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's.
That's fine, we got the reference and we'll clean up the consistency.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
We can do, we can do a search through the document, make sure that's cleared up.
But no, but that's a good point and it should be explained.
Alright. Any, any other comments more broadly, substantively on this changing demographic section again? References, this is a summary to an appendix, so this is intended to just provide some highlights.
I would like to challenge line one ninety seven. Almost half of all Long Hill residents have lived in their homes for at least twenty years. Where does that statistic come from?
The census.
Is that residents or is that homeowners?
Um, I will have to look.
Because twenty five percent of the population is school age children and over a span of twenty years, most of them are gonna move out.
Oh, I will, yeah, but no, I think it's probably more, you know, the head of household, the head of household.
For example.
I've lived in my house for twenty years.
Yeah, has lived in.
Twenty three years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the word residents is probably the wrong word to use there.
Okay, so maybe what we say is, you know.
Okay, that's something we could definitely catch with your edits.
Yeah, the edit, that's an edit comment, moving on.
Yeah.
Okay, can we, can we move on just in the element of time, please?
I'd like, I'd like to understand how the boldface will be rewritten.
Boldface.
Residents stay in their homes longer than in the county.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I could, it's an attempt to shorten what I.
Do you mean compared to other residents in the county or do you mean that the home moves out of the county?
Yeah, so, um, okay, so the residents stay in the, um.
Residents of Long Hill stay in their homes longer than the average resident of the county.
Than the, right, exactly.
Right, but again, this is, this is a perfect thing to make a note, write in what you think it should say and we'll consider it.
No, and it, that's helpful, that's helpful.
Yeah, so good, moving on.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Alright, so this next section is all new, or at least the three point four point one four.
Right, so again, this is, um, the electric vehicle requirements.
It's fine.
Uh, that are.
All straightforward.
Came down from the governor and this information, again, it could be placed somewhere else and sort of referred to, um, because it's a lot of information about it. But it, it is something that is important because it's something that will have to be incorporated into all of projects that qualify going forward.
Do we have, your last sentence there, two thirty six, is this ordinance became effective in each municipality?
Yeah.
I don't recall that this mu- this municipality has passed an ordinance along these lines.
You didn't. It became, it became law by law. And so it, it doesn't matter that you didn't, but I, I, what I would argue is that it would be helpful to have it in your, in your.
Well, another copycat ordinance is copying the language of the statute.
Well, it is, but it, you know, it's, you don't have a choice essentially.
I'm, I'm not arguing that, but every, every possible motor vehicle violation is not, in the statute, is not copied into the ordinance. Statutes apply and the ordinance implements pieces of that as appropriate locally. But as long as the statute is there, why do I wanna copy it? And why do I wanna say that?
No, 'cause there's, what they did is.
It has be, that each municipality has done it.
No, 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 they created an ordinance that you, whether you like it or not, is, applies to Long Hill. It's an, it's an ordinance.
So what should, have you got a suggestion that we should look at it at some point and amend it?
And just incorporate it into your own ordinance.
Fine, is that a recommendation?
Cause all you're saying here, all, all that's being said is the model land use ordinance became effective in each municipality, including Long Hill.
Right, perfect. Does it become a recommendation elsewhere?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes, it does.
Good, moving on.
But that's what it is. There, it's an actual ordinance and if you want, Dennis, I can send it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I'm, I am troubled because Long Hill does not have an ordinance unless it's adopted by the township committee. Now, you can have a model ordinance.
Can we stop beating a dead horse here and move on? This is ridiculous. I'm sorry, this is crazy.
I'm sorry.
We have a, a consultant, a consultant wrote a paragraph, I think we all agree that it's good. Let's just move on.
Alan?
I'm sorry, do you wanna take a vote on this, Dennis?
You, you're, you're the only person in this room who keeps saying move on.
Yeah, let's move on. No, I think everybody in this room, okay, does anybody wanna move on here?
Yes.
One, two, how many?
Okay, but let's just, let's round it. I think we've rounded out the comment unless you have anything more.
Let's move on.
I'll take, give a, sorry, the substantive point that Dennis raised is that if there were more ordinances that have been adopted by default, then we should in principle be doing what Dennis is saying, as long as that comment is made further on as recommendation. As a principle, that's a good principle to.
And we captured that as a, we'll be sure to capture that as a recommendation, so it is an official ordinance instead of by default.
Right. That's a good principle to know. Perfect.
Right, for example, if, if Prism or ALI were to come before us today, they'd have to do, they'd have to do what is in that ordinance.
Okay, good, got it.
A statute can apply.
Okay, I think we got it.
To everybody in the state. A statute can include a model ordinance.
The model ordinance, I'll send you the legislation.
But that doesn't make it a town ordinance. It only become, it only is a statute.
It became effective as an ordinance in every municipality in the state. I will send you the language so you know.
Alright.
Please, send me the language.
Um, alright, so.
Okay. The next sections then begin to break down the different districts, correct?
Right, and so, you know, essentially how I did it is, uh, cause you're supposed to talk about in a, in a, you're supposed to talk both land use and the zoning. And I sort of conflated the two often, which is that, you know, you have the single family detached residential includes a bunch of, a few different zones, but in other places in Long Hill, they're really one in the same. You know, the industrial land use is the same as the industrial zone. So, um, what I did here, and again, this could be perhaps per down, which is to discuss where these areas are, what kind of requirements, you know, what's permitted, what are their bulk requirements? And then an assessment of, well, here are some things that have been identified as issues with then recommend, recommended actions. Yes, Dennis?
Yes, and, and breaking it down in that same structure for each of these districts.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I'm wondering where we are putting medium density, single family residential housing that exists in low density zones.
Um, you mean like in the conservation zone?
No, I'm talking about density modified, just development. Where we have put medium and high density housing into zones which are which are currently zoned for larger sized lots than the lots we have granted under density mod. And I don't know whether those, that is a high density neighborhood or a medium density neighborhood.
It's, it's, it's a unique thing in Long Hill. I think it's a good point that it should be added. That there are these areas that have more density modification subdivisions that put denser development in lower denser neighborhoods. I think that's a good point to add, cause it's, it's, it's a kind of a, um, whatever the right word is. It's, 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 uh, unique to Long Hill.
And at two eighty, the R five zone was started with the Valley Road ordinance in two thousand sixteen. But be, long before that, the master plan committee had defined the R five zone as discussed later on in three point four point three point three point three on the next page. So the R five zone as it exists on Metzler is only a placeholder that we had to establish in order to get the, the Valley Road ordinance done. Uh, but it is not unique to Metzler because we're gonna do hundreds of them later on on the next page.
Okay, but I think, I think it's fine. This is the existing condition as it stands.
Yeah, we're just, this is just a snapshot on the description of the existing. So it's existing, assessment, actions.
But it's a snapshot that does not.
Is it true?
Well, of course it's true.
Okay.
No, I think it's fine that it's gonna be expanded, but I think you wanna say, well, right now, this is where it is.
This is what it is.
Yeah.
This is literally just, the first section in each of these sections is literally, this is the current state of affairs.
I'm just suggesting that eight or nine years from somebody who reads this thing and looks at the map is gonna say, well, I got hundreds of R fives all over town. Why does this say Metzler?
Because it'll, they'll read the recommendations.
They'll see the recommendations which are in the next page with regards to the expansion of these. Alright. I think again, a lot of the specifics, please read through this carefully.
Right.
And provide editorial comments or questions that the master plan committee can take up.
But can I just actually raise?
Sure.
The R five, I have that it was removed, meaning not removed from Metzler, but that recommendation to add additional lots was removed. Should it be put back in? Cause I don't, I don't have that here as a recommendation. Anyway, that's just a question.
Say that one more time.
I don't remember dozens of them, I.
Was, the question is, was the R five removed?
Meaning, I thought the R five was supposed to be like lots, was it under ten thousand square feet? Yeah.
Cause I think. Yes, lot size is ten thousand square feet. No, well, this says the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet.
So it should be, should be R f, so I'm sorry, if you go on to the next page, we're on, on line three oh three. Now you have the R two to R forty five, R three to R thirty. Should D be R five to R ten?
No, you should add another line.
Right, that says R five to R ten?
Yeah, yeah, that's a new line, three oh three.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so we are but.
Yeah, okay.
R f, so R five.
And this is to comment that undersized lots that you, you, you keep talking about, right Dennis?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good catch.
That's fine.
Alright, so the next section is trying to capture all of the multifamily housing. And what I did was separated into two, and one was the ones that sort of existed prior to the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and the ones that were done subsequent. Um, becau- hold on, wait, wait just one second. And the reason I did is because I thought that some of the recommendations, you know, creating one MF or one TH zone were really specific to the multifamily zones that existed prior to the settlement agreement. And you wouldn't wanna apply that same recommendation to, to the, um, post settlement agreement developments. Anyway, go ahead, Dennis.
I gotta tell you, I read the words multifamily residential pre two thousand seventeen settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Your copy and paste key must've got worn out moving that phrase down through the next couple of pages. And I would propose that you simplify that language.
Okay, go, go ahead, that's fine. It is.
I would, I would simply say henceforth the phrase legacy multifamily applies to the zones pre two thousand seventeen settlement agreement with fair share. And then henceforth use the phrase legacy multifamily. Now, I don't know what the corresponding phrase is for the post two thousand seventeen, but at least it cuts down the weight of the paper I have to carry around.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I, may, uh, I'll think about it. And if anybody else thinks of it.
I would also suggest the paragraph at line three fourteen, which describes the newer multifamily zones, I would suggest that that be moved down to line, uh, two forty two. In other words, recite the, the, the legacy zones and then introduce the new zones.
Did I do that?
Hmm?
I did that.
Yeah.
No, you, you described the new zones before you described the old zones.
Did I?
The paragraph three four, the paragraph at line three fourteen is premature. You're gonna get into it in depth, two pages later.
These are, these are the zones that came out of the settlement agreement.
Right, so you're saying basically take that paragraph and push it down. That makes, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
That's a note.
Where would we put it at the, at line three forty two, three forty three, or?
After three, three, four, five.
Yes.
Well, you're, you're gonna talk about it at line three sixty two, you're gonna spend several pages talking about it.
No, section three four five. Just put it there.
This introductory paragraph is out of, is out of place.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, you're, you're correct.
Just move it to the next section.
Yep.
Move on.
Okay, so that concludes the residential districts. Now, the cons, the commercial districts, again, this is things that I thought needed to be taken to account so future generations understood why we were making certain recommendations. Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
We're missing, we're missing a fact at line three thirty one through three forty two. And the fact is that all four of those zones are essentially spot zones specifically created for one development each.
Yeah.
And I think we should say that rather than saying includes centennial run, includes this, includes that, or for example, this, for example, Lounsbury. There are, those examples that you cited are the only project in each of those four spot zones. And we may as well fess up to the fact that they're spot zones. And what our recommendation is, is that you unwind the spot zoning into a more aggregate zone.
Oh, I see. I, the, I, the thing I don't know, and maybe perhaps somebody here can tell me, which is I did read some of these zones were created to facilitate affordable housing, or to, to, to encourage the creation of affordable housing pre two thousand seventeen. And, um, if that's the case, that's not really spot zoning.
Sure it is. The developer came in and said, here's what I wanna build, give me a zone for it.
Well, except that you were doing it to meet your.
Yeah.
For example, the TH zone could never get approved today because the streets are too narrow, the setbacks and yards are too small. We'd never approve, and the density is, is the highest of all the townhouse developments in town. We'd never approve that zoning today.
But the question, I guess my question is, was that approved and that zoning put in place to create affordable housing? Was that the primary goal?
No, no, it had nothing to do with affordable housing, but these are all pre-affordable zones anyway. No, no, it had nothing to do with affordable housing, but these are all pre-affordable zones anyway.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But I would, I would mention the fact somehow that these four zones are spot zones. The only, the only zone in this list that applies to more than one property is the RMF zone.
Okay, okay.
That's easy enough.
That's good.
Rather than spot zoning, did you say something like unique to single project or something like that?
What? Yeah, I mean, I could do that. I, that's, I don't wanna get everybody in trouble and say, oh, those, these, you know, where they're somewhere, where they're in some way illegal.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's a kind of a third rail term.
Yeah, right, you don't wanna say spot, you don't wanna say spot zoning.
Right.
Yeah.
Why don't you wanna say spot zoning?
Because it makes it sound illegal.
Sounds bad.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like the unique to the project.
Right, unique to individual projects.
Yeah, and, and I mean, yeah.
But still.
All right.
All right, we move on.
That's my wordsmith for the night.
Um.
Yes, bad Adam.
All right, so we've moved that one paragraph down to the beginning of three point four point five.
Right, and again, this is, um.
This is now post.
This is the, we're not, we're now calling.
Uh, I'm, I'm still back at, at three four four three, recommended actions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, move single-family houses currently located in multifamily zones to the adjacent R or village zone. I'm not sure we wanna do that. Because village zones in general don't allow first-floor housing. They're all housing over commercial. So we, we.
So what's the alternative?
Moving a single-family house into the village zone simply pollutes that zone.
So what's the, what's an alternative recommendation?
I don't know. I don't, I, I need to go back and read the history of this movement. But I can't think, I mean, the only village zone right now that has single-family housing is, um, Sterling and Myersville. All the, the Gillette and Millington have residences over commercial.
No, they have single-family residences too.
So I'm not sure that I know of a situation where a single-family residence should be moved into a village zone.
Gillette.
But I'll have to go back and check the history from six years ago and find out if there is an isolated example.
Okay.
That's a, that, I didn't have time to check.
Can you, will you take that on as homework?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to do some homework on that. I don't argue that single-family houses should be moved into adjacent R zones.
It's just the village.
Where that exists, but I'm just not sure about moving them into village zones.
Got it, okay.
Got it, thank you.
And number four at line three fifty-eight, I think that is essentially a duplicate of, of number three above. I think number four is just a different way of saying number three.
Oh, okay, well, I'd know, I thought that number three was sort of creating these two prototypes, right? Two zoning prototypes, you have town owns and then you have multifamily, and then if.
Yeah, but you talk about consolidating up above in number three and you use, and you do the TH there.
Yeah, no, I thought that the point of number four was that there was a TH development that was not entirely in a TH zone.
Right, so that was a specific.
A split-zone townhouse development?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, this is a, a, this is a legacy.
This is in the tables, right?
Somebody help me. Where's the split-zone townhouse development?
Yeah.
I, I don't have, we, we need the tables, because Dennis says, those are Dennis's tables from a couple, three years back, so we need to read them together.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, that, that, that's fine.
In fact, maybe what you could do is send this out with those, with appendices in the tables, because I know we've gone through that a bunch of times.
With the tables. Sure. Okay, all right.
And just to tick and tie backwards and forwards would be good, because I know we made some changes.
Okay, all right.
To just check, so the action would be to check the recommendations.
Yeah, we should all go through this in detail. I just wanna get through the whole thing and then I know which areas.
Absolutely, yeah, which areas to, we're, we're trying to get to a point of which areas to focus on. Clearly, these recommendations are important for each of these districts.
Absolutely, and we should be thorough in that, no problem with that, but it's not tonight.
All right, so then the next section, are you, are you ready, Dennis, to move on to the next section? This is, this is, um, the opposite of legacy affordable housing. This is, um, new, uh, affordable housing zones. Um, with a description. The one thing I talked about and I would like to discuss a little bit further has to do with the zoning on the thermoplastic site. And, um.
Yeah, I thought you did that well.
Well, but here's the question, which is you know, are we gonna mess with some, uh, the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center? If we re, if we say, you know what, we've, we've, we know this can't be developed for affordable housing, the zoning no longer makes sense. And we should remove that overlay.
If we, if we dissolve the overlay zone, then it just falls back to the BD zone, which is the underlying zone, and that's all that's permitted there.
Yeah.
Which isn't a bad thing, right?
That, I think that's fine, and I, the other thing I thought was that it is a redevelopment area, and if somebody were to come in.
That's my concern.
Yeah, if someone were to come in with a really interesting idea that the township wanted to pursue, they could do a redevelopment plan.
Why can't we just leave it until the next settlement comes about?
I mean, I, it, it's, it's up to you. I just thought it, it kind of.
I wouldn't mess, did, personally, I wouldn't mess with it, but.
Yeah.
I think you, I think you explained it pretty well. If, when you jump to page one, there's thirty-seven. And you're up to line, um, thirteen fifty.
Oh, okay.
No, you know. Where you say the Jersey, you know, DEP would not, would not issue residential development permits.
Yeah.
You know, and just leave it at that.
Yeah, me too.
We've owned it, but it can't be built there.
Yeah, and just, and I.
Yeah, and just leave that alone, rather than, rather than strike that whole thing from thirteen thirty-four to thirteen fifty-one, just, I, I think it's fine as long as it's noted that it's.
Okay.
DEP said you can't, you can't build what we, what we planned there.
Right.
Okay.
I think it's better than just striking it.
Okay.
We just always, I mean, I just caution anytime we're relying on some state regulation, because it could change.
Sure.
Just, we wanna be careful.
But then, but then you, you make a notation that it's changed.
All right.
So, just to confirm, Alan, you say leave the zone.
But if it's protested.
But that's probably not gonna change.
Right, probably not.
So, and you're saying leave the zone as it is?
Yes.
Just wanna confirm that. Do we need as many words here for these say?
I think you could say that on every page.
No, no, but in a particular.
No, I think it's good.
Particularly this stuff, do we need as many words? Could you just tighten this up a bit?
Yeah, it can.
Uh, uh, which, which section specifically are you referring?
Or, or the, um, post-two thousand seventeen zones, definitely, just quick.
You wanna submit, submit it? Oh, to, to consolidate the.
I will submit.
There, there you go, okay.
No.
Well, go David.
I mean, it's all gonna be in the, uh, affordable housing as well.
I, one thing I liked though is I wanted to have
Yeah, I think that's.
that the zones were there where they were.
Yes.
And what the density was.
Perfect.
Because that's what I thought was important.
We're in density.
I, I, I thought that it was a good use of, in background.
Yeah.
I just.
If somebody was trying to figure that out.
A little thing like, like, uh, like three ninety-eight, Florida is not really relevant.
Yeah.
You know, that could be out, you know, stuff, a little stuff like that.
That's fine.
Right.
Yeah, just consistency to what you're really trying to say. It doesn't matter, that's a general comment.
Yeah, no. No, I, I think that's, that's good, and I, the, the things I think are perhaps interesting to people are the densities and the height.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Because I think that's things that people care about.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and the number of stories, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Did I miss something, or is there some reason why this whole section couldn't be just referenced to the housing element?
Well, I'll tell you, this is a little bit more elaborate than the housing element, because the housing element was done prior to the zoning being prepared.
Yes.
Right, right.
Right.
That's true.
And so a lot of it wasn't necessarily worked out.
Is it possible that there are conflicts between what you have written on these two pages against, when compared against the housing element? That's the risk.
Yeah, no, no, it's not a conflict. It's just that the housing element said, hey, we're gonna, um, put this many affordable units on this site. But it, it doesn't talk about, and we're gonna call the zone this, and we're gonna allow this density. That is, that was more part of the implementation of the housing plan, and so that's what this reflects, is the implementation.
I am concerned at several places, but the first of them is three seven, line three seven six. Where you talk about maximum building height is three stories and fifty feet for pitched roof buildings. Unless you, that is a misstatement, unless you clarify that the fifty-foot number is flaky. The fifty-foot number at this point and on the next page is based on the midpoint of the roof structure. The midpoint between the eve and the ridge, which means that the ridge, the maximum height, is probably fifty-five to sixty feet, depending on the pitch of the roof. This is a, this is an artificial definition of height.
Just for this.
It is not the height definition in our ordinance. The, this midpoint only appears in these two zones, and it is misleading if you just say the maximum height is fifty feet. Because it's not. The maximum height is somewhere between fifty-five and sixty feet.
I, that's a good point, and I think I should add that, actually.
I would just take the heights definition out of here unless you wanna put a lot more words in.
Well, I, I.
If we take the height out, then we should take the other.
Yeah.
Information, and we have to decide, is, I think that information is helpful to set the context.
Maybe, maybe. I do too, personally. Um, I also think the density is important, because it gives people a sense of where in the township there's been.
Context, right.
What kinda density has been permitted in the township, and also what kinda height? Even if it's for these very specific projects.
Yeah, but you can't say the height is a maximum fifty feet if in fact the ordinance clearly permits fifty-five to sixty feet, depending on the slope of the roof.
We'll put that modifier in.
It's a phony definition.
No, I, I got you, and I, I think what we could do is perhaps maybe do a little footnote, or, you know, that this more, you know, explains it.
There you go.
Well.
What?
I did not write the ordinance for these two zones, but it exists and it is easy enough for someone to come in with a, uh, drawing that says fifty-five feet and get it approved as a fifty-foot midpoint. And I know it's confusing. I'm not happy with the way that ordinance was written. But it was written to hide something. And the master plan does not necessarily need to perpetuate the hiding operation. Especially if we expect the master plan to last into the next generation of readers.
Yeah, that, I think that's fine. I think you're right.
All right, so I think I just flagged where reference is, and we'll just footnote that.
Sorry, just, just a question on that fifty foot. Why can't we just say fifty foot and that's the peak? So then they're, they're, they're stuck with whatever.
Well, it's because the zoning has, it, it, it plays is, allows, is a little bit more flexible definition of height that allows for greater height, but it's already there.
The zoning.
We can't change that. That was part of the settlement.
Right.
I mean, in the end, the master plan's not gonna be used to determine this. I think Dennis's comment's valid with regards to consistency, so can we, we'll just modify. But in the end, they're gonna have to comply with the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, they're not gonna, they don't have to comply with the ma, you know what I'm saying? So we just don't wanna be misleading.
No, I, I. I think that the reason I like it is because I think it tells a good story, a good story.
Yes. It does.
You know, um, of, of.
And, and it gives people context, the developer coming in, understanding what we have approved in precedent in some of these special projects.
Um, one issue that I would like to raise, I guess maybe I can do it here, is there had been a longstanding recommendation to rezone the Tifa site, which currently is in the L.
I two.
I two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it has an overlay, right, that permits the, the prison development. And, you know, I, I, as you all know, uh, based on the sewer ban, the prison development can't go forward until the capacity's increased. So what is, what exists on the Tifa site now, from what I understand, is, you know, some of the, some of the businesses are actually doing well.
Mm-hmm.
And so the question I have for the board, and it's really a policy decision, or it's, you know, a recommendation, which is do we rezone, do we recommend rezoning Tifa? Or do we wait until the development is actually underway?
Good answer.
Yeah, okay.
Wait.
Yeah, I say wait, yeah.
Yeah, because I would be ashamed to change it and then find that.
Wasting time and energy on something that's unnecessary.
I would propose leaving it alone, only because tenants will come and go, and they all need site approval.
Exactly.
And if we rezone it, then every one of those
That's why it's an overlay.
Right.
site plans has to come to the board.
Yep.
If we leave it alone as an LI two, then Deborah can handle the zoning permits.
That's precisely why we did an overlay there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And so I, I think, I, I, I sort of arbitrar, not arbitrarily, but I kinda.
But that, that is sort of, uh, that is sort of giving in to the fact that the, uh, the owner's gonna bring in new tenants over the next couple of years.
Fine.
I hate to, I hate to accept that as reality.
Right.
Because that's not what our intention is.
Yeah, well.
Landowner has a right to make money.
Okay, commercial.
Okay, so, so the next big section, uh, had to do with, things having to do with the commercial districts. And again, these are just all the factors that I think were, have been taken into account, um, with the recommendations in the commercial zones. And this primarily has to do with e-commerce and COVID. Um, and this sort of changing retail landscape, the changing needs for, the changing banking landscape. The, uh, changing desire or need for restaurants to have drive-through windows, for pharmacies to have drive-through windows. Um, you see now in a lot of parking lots, pickup parking spaces, you know, that are designated. Um, and I think those are things that should be thought about, you know, as in, in terms of site plan. For example, like if I go to some Dunkin' Donuts, they'll have a bunch of, uh, things that are set aside for Uber Eats or whatever. People who are coming in to pick up deliveries.
Run up.
That's fine.
But that means, you know, how does that parking get counted? Does it get counted? You know, because when I go to Dunkin' Donuts, I can't park there. So does that mean that the parking that we're requiring, how does that impact the number of spaces we're gonna require? I guess it's my question.
That's fine, and, and.
Or does it?
Sorry.
No, I, I, that was it, that was my only comment, sorry.
I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. It.
No, it's worth, something we should think through and should be written here and.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But, but it's good to, it's good to bring that up in the master plan discussion.
Yeah.
So not necessarily make a recommendation to the management, just saying, yeah, this is coming.
That's true, that's true. Yeah.
We should look at it.
So if there's some sections like that, just highlight those, perhaps those areas that you would like a com, a person think further on. Can you just highlight those perhaps? One thing that's missing here is my pet favorite peeve is, um, outside dining and outdoor, outdoor areas. Right, because we saw that, I don't think anybody would disagree that outdoor dining is a good thing. And it's, how can you best encourage it without using parking lots? Like, you know, throw islands or whatever, just sticks on the park, which is fine, because that's where they have space. How do we accommodate that type of?
You put them on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
Take a look at Morristown, our.
Yeah, exactly right, or Hoboken, it's all on the sidewalk in New York.
Or just close down streets and summit.
But we, I think we've got to be more thoughtful about how we can encourage outdoor dining versus parking and using a com, a space.
Literally, all along South Street in Morristown.
I, I mean, if we're during COVID and COVID and they took over.
Every restaurant has their tables on the sidewalk, yeah. There's no room to walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but that, but that's gone, I think, now, but, yeah.
Well, no, because they're still there.
Yeah.
Because I go there a fair bit.
Yeah.
Um, but how do we, what's our?
Can't walk out of the street.
I, I, I'm just making this up for a second, but, you know, can you allow more coverage on sort of wetland areas that could be dedicated to outdoor dining? Right, so it may not need to be permanent, but it could be, you know, just making stuff up. But those sort of things we may wanna think about.
Outdoor dining, encourage, where, where does it go?
Okay.
So this is a section that we went back and forth on in regards to, did we wanna keep it in the flow of the document? I, I don't think it's too disruptive, and it sets the context to really thinking about commercial districts. If we put it in an appendix, we would still wanna have at least a paragraph that summarizes some of this information.
You're gonna think about your outdoor dining. You're gonna think about your outdoor dining.
So. That, that was the one consideration I wanna put out to the rest of the commit- or the board in regards to did, did people feel, you don't have to answer now, but did people feel this was too disruptive to the flow of the section getting after then the commercial related issues?
No, I don't, because I think it, how best to categorize some of this stuff?
Yep.
But I think it's helpful to set the scene.
Yep.
Of influences of the future.
Yeah, uh.
And I think these trends, I mean, are undeniable, I mean, the other thing is, is, you know, a lot of people look at it and say, are we over emphasizing the impact of COVID nineteen? Well, no, I mean, it has changed in some instances things forever, the way we're gonna do business.
Yeah.
You're starting to hear new nuances about.
Right, whether it's COVID or not, it's a result of technology developments that allow people to work more flexibly.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, Liz, I just made one, one comment to David, and that is when he's talking about outdoor dining, it would probably be better to have that under the recommendations common to all commercial districts, which would be sort of three, five, two. Cause outdoor dining doesn't necessarily relate to, 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 uh, to e-commerce or COVID, it relates to amenities.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get you dining outdoors in February.
Thanks.
Bring your parka.
And, and loud news, music at ten o'clock at night.
Also great.
I'll build it right over my APB.
We'll build, we'll build an igloo for you to sit out when you're, you're drunk.
That's fine, I do love the idea.
It's not approved.
It's not approved. Yeah, you'll need a new zone, we'll get a zoning ordinance for your igloo.
Um, uh, the next section has to do with outdated signage, which is something that has come up before, but one of the things I brought up, which is something that's in the zoning board reports for the past couple of few years, which is gas stations are not a permitted use anywhere in Long Hill. But when a gas station comes in, say a new te- a new operator comes in, they wanna have their signage package and there's nothing for, uh, a reviewing board or for, for Deb to, to, to say whether it's okay or not. Because there's nothing in the ordinance having to do with gas station signage, because gas stations are not a permitted use anymore. Yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I, sorry, I went a little bit further thinking about the whole uses. I don't, did we actually address this in here or not?
What, what about, what, what particularly?
Gas station, should we be making those a permitted use?
Oh.
Should we allow Yager Lumber to be a permitted use, you know, that stuff, is that detailed here anywhere? Cause I know we did some work on, uh, another spreadsheet and stuff. I think that's an important thing that we should incorporate in here in general.
Okay.
Can you point to where that work was done, you know, as a reference?
Yeah, I sent you the spreadsheet, some of the stuff, but, but I could, then I had, um, Tom
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Just double check against what exists versus what is not permitted.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we, cause, and I, I've talked about this.
I'm just trying to fast track it as opposed to trying to dig it out, you know, for Liz to dig it out, if she's.
Oh, I think you got it, right, Liz, I sent you the spreadsheet.
You, you have sent it to me?
Okay, alright, okay, good, okay, cool.
Oh, yeah.
So the action item there is to get some of the non-conforming use issues.
And address them and say whether we want to continue not permitting gas stations, let's have that conversation.
Right.
Or do we want to permit it and just get over some of this, yeah, negative consequences of it? Except, no, sorry, I don't know if that helps on you, and.
No, 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 that, that, thank you. Um, alright, then there's the similar building stock, cause that's something that came up in every zone, and particularly one of the villages and the hamlet, that there was difficulty trying to make a kind of cohesive village when, sorry, go ahead Dennis.
Little B and D for gas stations, yeah, twenty thirty five.
I'm troubled by.
No, but.
The warehousing.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna build a gas station.
I'm troubled to be. At that area, am I interfering?
No, go ahead and speak, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'm troubled because it says that because we're close to the interstates, we could be an attractive location for last mile fulfillment centers. The fact is, we're not close. We're two-lane highways away from both those interstates and several intersections and traffic lights away from those interstates. And within town, we don't have any decent roads for, to support warehousing.
No, this is last mile though from fulfillment, these are not semis.
Yeah, they're, they're.
These are the small, what do they call them? Yeah, well UPS and smaller.
UPS trucks.
Yeah, but the fulfillment centers that Amazon is building are a million square feet.
I, no, we're not talking about for those.
Yeah, no, 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 that's what the, these last mile.
And they, and they're, they're building enough of them that they're not talking.
Oh, well, no, we know about those, I mean.
No, the, the, these last mile centers are more like thirty thousand square feet and less.
Yeah.
Right.
But if you're building ten million square foot distribution centers in New Jersey, why would you wanna build a three thousand square foot distribution center?
It's a last mile logistics, you need to drop off packages and then distribute out to the neighborhoods.
We, we have exactly that situation, it's called the US Post Office.
Well, the, yeah, we know how well that's working.
And look at.
No, Dennis, I can send around, there's something that the state has put out, cause there's sort of a hierarchy of warehousing, where you have places that are close to the ports, then you have places that are like have good highway access, that Amazon would, would do like a billion
What, fulfillment?
Square feet, and then you have the smaller places that are actually near to the customers that are, things are getting delivered to.
But UPS has been in that business for decades and UPS has not seen fit to build miniature localized distribution centers.
They would love to have those, believe me, that's the major market right now.
And Amazon is not going in that.
And it's really, uh, it's really in this category of the micro to small, the three thousand, the twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five thousand square feet, these are small.
I, what I've seen in some other communities, it's not necessarily UPS, it's not Amazon, it's like smaller operations and they.
They're independent.
They're independent.
Right, yeah.
Another type of building we're not addressing is self-storage areas, buildings, and they are popping up all over the place.
Yeah, can we do that and explicitly say not permitted?
Yeah.
I never ever, that'd be on my, never wanna see self-storage in Long Hill Township.
But not, David's not permitted. People renting apartments, it's, it's always gonna follow.
Never, no, Route twenty-two, that's what Route twenty-two is for, Tom.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
That's what Route twenty-two is for.
Dennis, to, to, to get back to your question, I don't know if a fulfillment center would go in Long Hill, but I think you should be open to it because that's like the hot market, so if somebody wants to come here to do that, think about it.
When I read that, I thought it made a whole lot of sense, because it's exactly what is, is, seems to be happening.
Yeah.
Is, is the self-storage tied to the e-commerce and the fact that we're getting too much crap? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm talking about the small, the small, you know.
We're not, we're not big enough for.
Yeah, last mile centers, yeah, they're cropping up all over the place.
We're not big enough for this town for this stuff.
For fulfillment centers?
That's something that could, could went to.
Let, let them go to elsewhere.
No, 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 but smaller fulfillment centers.
No, I understand, but even so, I can't see.
Yeah. You don't want, you don't wanna permit them. I, I mean, I think that that's something that you should, and maybe this can be rewritten, to say it's something that is a, a burgeoning market.
Yeah, I mean, all this is, is codifying, this isn't, this isn't, this is just trying to codify what is out there.
Oh, no, I, I, I agree with that.
It's not, oh, this is what we want for Long Hill Township.
Or we can say we don't want it.
Well, yeah, but this is just codifying what the market trends are at this day.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, but we can just still make statements that we, we do not want to pursue this.
That we're thinking about. Yeah, well, that wouldn't be in this bullet list, it'd be somewhere else.
No, 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 that's, the recommendation is, don't do it.
Right.
Um, the next thing, having to, you know, again, which I think you have to bring up, if it's, you know, master plan that has a duration of, you know, ten to twenty years, is the legalization of cannabis, because
Yep.
although the township has at, at present opted out, you know, the conditions of opting out were, let's see how it goes.
Yep.
And if in five or ten years, the township thinks it was a positive thing in the communities that opted in, you wanna have some sort of, um, basis to say, well, in our master plan, it says to revisit it, you know? So that's why it's in there.
It gives us the flexibility, which we've, has already been kinda designed into how the ordinance was passed anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so again, then there's recommendations specific to all of the commercial districts, and again.
I'm sorry, I, I hate to come back to the, the cannabis.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Are we making, is that, is that like a land use concern?
Hmm.
Because what if CBS decides that they're gonna have cannabis for sale?
Well, I think, um, I'm not a legal expert on this, but like, but I think that
No, no, yeah, nor am I. I'm just wondering if that should.
As of right now, I don't think that they could sell it based on, because Long Hill didn't opt in.
Correct, so leave that at the legislative side with the TC as opposed to us having to even speak about it.
But the municipalities had to speak to it, according to law.
The municipal, the TC had to, but not us, so I'm, that's, that's where I'm at, why do we have to put it in this?
Yes.
Well, I think.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right?
A reason I say that is because, let's say the township opts in, well, then that might fill in some of your vacant storefronts. You know, and that, that, and that's.
But that becomes, again, a TC decision and then it will end in a business district.
Correct, I, I.
Not send, not selling it out of a residential area, it'll end up in a business district.
No, 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 I, I think the idea would be, and the reason I brought it up is because in the end, it will work, if it were to be opted in, it'll work its way into the zoning, I think.
Right.
And it would be something that you would.
I think there's a license that has to go there, it'll probably go hand in hand like alcohol.
Oh, you have to go to the, you have to go to the, you have to go to the CRC, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
Right, right, but it would.
Yeah, 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 and then you can't sell it within a certain number of school or this or that.
Highly regulated.
Right, yeah, right. But there's a whole citing, you know, requirements in regards to even citing.
Yeah. Because we don't address alcohol in this, so why would we address cannabis?
Well, because I think you already permit, I do say, I meant to say something about microbreweries, I don't think I did actually.
Oh, 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 let's admit that.
I did, I did.
Self, self-storage centers.
Alright, we know the drinkers are.
Alright, so I, I meant to suck that in, but, um, I think the way you would say, you know what, this is a good place for a tavern or whatever, or a given.
Well, you mentioned that we do have a microbrewer, we do.
I do, yeah, but, um.
Microbrewer, yeah.
Yeah, I think these are too specific, I mean, offices is one, you know, we're talking about offices, uh, elsewhere. I mean, brewery, cannabis, it's a, it's a store, it's a.
That's, that's, that's where I'm at.
I feel I'm sort of with Tom a little bit here, that I'm not sure if this, how much is this? So if, if somebody next week says that we, you know, we want, um, I don't know, some other, well, some other local, you know.
If, if something's fallen into that handgun ATV track, all this other stuff, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have what was an eight hundred page document, will become a ten thousand page document.
Yeah. Right.
I, I feel like that's a legislation thing, it should stay with the legislative body.
Yeah, yeah, I, I sort of would.
And then when, if they do something and it has to come to us and we'll look at it at that point.
Then let them address it and then, what, oh, do we have any, I think, I think so, it's, it's for me.
I th- I, I mean, I'll, I'll just, I'll respectfully just disagree just in regards to it codifies where we are as a township. Because in this plan, it does, for someone looking for a reference, looking, remember, this is like a marketing document.
See that line, I think, on corporations.
Yep.
Right.
Up here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it codifies what the township committee decided in twenty twenty-one with regards to its current state. If I were a developer, I'd go to a master plan, I'd say, well, I'm thinking about doing a can, you know, is cannabis?
But that also would be codified in, in, in a code book.
Hmm.
Right?
I'm saying that we're trying to make this a, a, a one-stop shop for someone to get a sense of the roadmap of what could be approved uses.
Okay.
There's no recommendation with regard to cannabis?
Yes, it's just, it's literally just what's currently out there.
Alright, let, let me read that part, out of my leisure, and then.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
It's fine.
Well, great for that, in the background.
Or, or shorten it.
I.
Oh, jeez.
Thank you, that, that, that's just, just wanted, wanted it shortened, there, Dennis.
And then you'll shorten it, lighten it.
No, I'm just messing.
Yes, Dennis.
I'm having a problem with cannabis. It's the only product that I can think of where we're explicitly talking about master plan language, zoning ordinance language to prohibit the sale of a particular product. You can sell gasoline at your gas station, but you can't sell high test or premium. You can sell bread, but you can't sell bagels. This is the only product that we're attempting to prohibit as a zoning issue. And I have, I have trouble that the zoning master plan should take a stand, one way or the other. And in fact, as I look at the recommendations for business, I haven't found the recommendation on this yet, I only see a recitation of the problem.
No, there, there is no.
There's no recommendation, we're staying.
Well, and why do we bother to recite the problem?
Well.
We just got ta- we just got through talking about that.
Yeah. No, we were saying that it kind of, this is something that is on the back burner and may become an issue if the township committee.
How can, how can the prohibition of one product become an issue, ever? That's if the, if the township committee wants to regulate it, like they regulate noise or speeding or stop signs, let them do that, I don't see that it is a land use issue.
If this, if this grows as to the projections that I've been hearing, this is a significant revenue source for municipalities, a ratable. Okay?
We've never been bothered by, we've never been bothered by that in the past, look at all the amount of money we poured into open space just to take it off of tax rolls. I, I can't see that, I can't see that that's a judgment or a balance that, that we have to deal with in the master plan.
Well, we don't make any recommendations specific with cannabis, I, what we had just discussed, and I, the reason.
Why is it, why is it an issue then?
Well, because it could potentially be a land use issue, if it becomes a permitted use, you're gonna have cannabis businesses wanting to come into your commercial areas.
Yes.
And so it's just something.
And take up your vacant storefronts.
And it's, it's something to just at least acknowledge, I think you should acknowledge it.
If somebody wants to farm cannabis, they're protected under the Right to Farm Act, we can't block that.
No, it's not a farming, but if, if somebody were to take, let's say there's a vacant storefront in Sterling.
Yes.
And they, you know, they, they can, and it, and it.
Kings.
And it becomes opting in, you know, that.
All the retail.
So, so in quick read of this, at five nine, uh, five nine six, you just talk about what the governor did, what it's all covered, and then in line six eleven, you talk about what the town did and, and the ordinance was for, and then that's it.
Yes. We don't take a position, we don't take a stance, all we do is factual. We're just codifying, we're just memorializing.
This is one of those things, again, that if I took all of this and put it in a separate section, maybe that would be my fault. Because it's sort of everything that is, you know, kind of current.
I think this is an appendix item.
Okay.
Current issues that may or may not have impacts.
It's an appendix item, thank you, okay.
Yeah. Because I, I agree, I, I put it in there just because I thought that is a huge change since the last master plan.
Yep.
And it, it, it.
But it's a huge trend too, I mean, there are some communities that are making a lot of money off of cannabis.
It's cool.
There are others that don't wanna have any part of it and everything in between.
Right.
You know, and I, yeah.
Well, I, I, I struck out some bunch of the lines, right, shortened it. I would think appendix is fine, if this is the only thing in the appendix, then, then don't do it.
No, 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 I think it would be probably a lot of this section.
But when you, when you go through it, if you find it doesn't naturally fit, I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I, I.
Leaving it here.
Right, right, if it's not enough to fill the appendix, agreed.
Yeah, I wanted it to sort of be.
Like appendix of emerging issues or emerging.
Yeah. Trends and issues.
Emerging trends and issues.
Generations for the future.
Appendix of emerg- I like that, emerging trends and issues, and just collect them all in there.
Right.
I'm just glad we didn't, we're not take, that was my concern, are we taking a stance on something?
No.
And that's what I don't wanna do.
Right.
No.
We are not.
I'm good with that.
Alright.
If, if cannabis is an issue because of potential revenue source, why don't we talk about casinos?
Well, because the casinos didn't, the township committee hasn't taken any action on casinos, they did with cannabis.
Actually, you need a state license for that.
I'm sorry, I had too many voices at once, go ahead.
Okay, so, so in, when the township committee took a stand on cannabis in twenty twenty-one, Okay, so, so in, when the township committee took a stand on cannabis in twenty twenty one, they said, we'll revisit this as the years go by. As far as I know, they have never thought about casinos. I don't even know if casinos, how, I don't know anything about casinos and how they're regulated. But, you know, cannabis was something that came to every municipality and the township committee took a, a position. But in taking that position, they said, we will revisit this.
Yes, and how does that make it a land use issue?
And so I think. Because it's gonna impact the uses of land in the township.
Yeah, but Don thinks it's a revenue, a tax revenue issue.
It's gonna be an application.
It, it potentially could be, it's both.
That too.
As far as the uses of land, you can't prohibit the farming, all you can do is prohibit the retail. And why would, why would we wanna take a stand that one specific product line is forbidden as a zoning matter?
Well, again, we don't.
Bagels, not bread.
You're not gonna see, you're not the store specific.
No, again, we don't take a stand, this is really, and I think what it's refining is maybe it's better to go in the appendix as a list of sort of.
Yes. I'm gonna read it.
Emerging trends.
Emerging trends, legislation that potentially has impacts on the land use.
Twenty years from now, someone might be considering, you know, that is a good thing, so bring it into the.
Emerging trends, right.
All right.
This is a list of emerging trends that we've thought about but don't have any recommendation on.
No, I think that it's something that should be acknowledged because it is a huge change. Um, and it was a huge, uh, legis-, legislation, and I think to not discuss it at all would be a glaring omission.
I like that you point to the ordinance, that gives everyone to go off and go do their own thing.
Yep. That's, that's right, that gives us a reference.
Yeah.
Okay, how's everybody doing? We're at nine thirty, do we need a break? Do we wanna?
Well, when do we wanna?
Go on, I mean, at best, we're trying to get through the land use element. I think that would be a great accomplishment tonight, but.
Are there any specific points that we haven't addressed as we go through this, that we haven't seen before?
Yes, I mean. Yeah.
Anything new?
And concept.
And if, and again, if people need more time, obviously to go through all the details, but this is, a lot of this is not necessarily new, right Liz? This is just.
Yeah, the.
The, it's a similar following to the other districts, going through, here are the conditions, here are the, you know, the recommendations, the assessment and the recommendations, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I guess I would ask you to look closely at the descriptions of the villages and the hamlet and the downtown.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I discussed a lot of, um, the areas where, that were in flood zones.
Mm-hmm.
And how that might impact.
Mm-hmm.
What is recommended in terms of gold standards and so forth. Um, the other thing that I think is something to take into account. I mean, I said or up front that we don't really know what COVID is, impacts are gonna be long term. But as of today, you know, transit ridership is way down still, right, and it's not projected to bounce back for, for a while. So, I think the concept of building up around the train stations is something that I would like to discuss a little bit further. Because it's, you know, it's sort of, does it still make sense, I guess?
And isn't even, even prac-, I mean, I, I, in some instances, I don't know, well, I guess we could change some of the zoning, but it. Like in the Gillette train station, it's all single family.
I don't think it would make sense to Gillette, like Sterling.
All right, just 'cause there's not a town center really there.
Right, and Sterling, I think, is complicated because of the environmental constraints. Millington is perhaps, but that, that's something to think about.
Right, commercial district.
Right.
Right.
All right, so very quickly, to, you, you talk about hazard vulnerability assessment, that's a new section, one.
Oh, yes.
Three point nine, the others are just, yeah, we just gotta work through the words, so.
Right.
Yeah, so the, um.
I think we've heard those before.
The, the hazard vulnerability, and I, I gotta tell you, this is, this is a little bit, um.
Page forty two.
New territory for everybody, I think, and this state, particularly in D E P, uh, NJDEP and working with Rutgers.
Mm-hmm.
Has provided a lot of data for each municipality.
So just, just so everybody knows, we're, we're really at fourteen sixty nine.
Right.
It's three point, three point nine.
Yep, right, yep, page forty two.
Right.
And, um.
Okay, line fourteen sixty nine.
Right.
So this is, again, what I did is I used the data that was out there and sort of summarized it again. This is something that could probably go in an appendix.
That's for, for land use.
Um, because it's sort of, uh. You know, it's a lot of words.
So what's important here, though?
Well, I think what's important is, um. I don't know. I think what's important is to discuss where the flood hazard areas are, um, and how.
And where these key assets are that we have, and, and that we have to protect.
And where the key assets are.
Yeah.
And, you know, for example, I didn't know until doing this where their emergency shelter locations were, you know, and, and I was, I was surprised.
Right, no, right, right, right.
That those were all, that, where they were.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, and, and when I looked them up, they were all in fact designated, you know, as, as shelters, um.
Just.
But, and I think, you know, which ones are the real vulnerabilities, clearly flooding and, you know, hurricanes is, is.
Okay, that's good, I think.
That kind of thing, but, and then, you know, the build-out analysis, I kind of cheated on this a little bit. I did set the map, um, to, you know, figure out where there were vacant properties outside of flood hazard areas. Um, but one of my main issues with a build-out analysis, similar to what we were talking about earlier with the projection. Is we don't really know what your affordable housing obligation is gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
So you may say, well, here, this is a single family, vacant lot in a single family zone, so all that can go there is a single family.
That's where the overlay piece comes in, right, that we're, we have to make an adjustment or, you know, respond to that.
And then so. Right, and somebody comes in and says, I can build affordable housing here.
Right, yeah.
And so then what you have projected to provide one household, you're now providing fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's one of my issues with the build-out analysis, uh, but it's something that we're required to do.
Mm-hmm.
So in the build-out analysis, is it subjective that it provides us flexibility as we're reading through it, or it's not pinning us against anything?
It. It's not pinning you against anything, and it's, it's basically a little, it's pretty, I'm willing to kind of wishy-washy.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little like, this is what this is, look at this map, but hey, we don't really know.
Mm-hmm. Right, okay.
Um.
Is this similar to what you done in other towns then?
Yes.
That's a hassle.
No, and I mean.
This is what the other towns.
Well, we don't have a crystal ball that's gonna tell us exactly what it is, so we have to, we have to have something there, um, okay.
The one.
The big, the big challenge, I just can echo, 'cause I'm in this business, is that the maps keep changing.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to recognize that even now with some of the new stormwater regulations is, they're asking professionals to try to predict. At what, the, the, at twenty one hundred.
Yeah.
You know, in the distant future is gonna be the potential for flooding, so they're giving us, the state's giving us these models. That we're trying to model then the storm flow.
Hmm.
It's really challenging.
So trying to forecast that, that twenty one.
Well, it's resulting in upland developments having to sometimes bring in two and three feet of fill to raise the grade.
Mm-hmm. To, to anticipate.
Yeah, but what about the neighbors? So you're just, it's a race to be who's highest in the neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's gonna get really challenging with what the state's trying to do with this vulnerability, climate vulnerability.
And, and again, with the recommendations, and, um, it's line seventeen thirty nine. I actually asked for Samantha to write that, and she did.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because, you know, she had added something to the zoning boards in a letter a year ago. Saying that the township is gonna have to adopt new flood plain regulations.
Yep.
And I said, did they ever do that? And she said, no, because they're still pending. And apparently what is still pending is perhaps gonna be much more stringent than, than was in the past.
Right.
Um, so that is what that, you know, I gotta got that from her, and she told me she.
Was that tied into the emergency stormwater rule?
Yes, and she said that.
And then, so that's not gonna get a, even come really, well, it's gonna be, I think it's coming out or it's now out in proposal. They backed off the emergency rule. This was all in response to Ida.
Right.
Yeah.
And they backed off the whole Ida issue and said, okay, we'll give you more time to reason through people who are regulated by this through a public comment period.
From what I understand, Samantha, the emerg-, the emergency rules are basically are very similar to what's being proposed.
Rule. Oh, yeah, no, it didn't really change. They just gave us more time to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah. So that this may become a very large issue in areas in Long Hill that are in the flood hazard areas.
Right. So, and, and quite frankly, the rule might even get passed before this is finalized. So we'll keep track of that, 'cause that's a very dynamic.
Yes.
And pertinent issue for Long Hill Township. I'd love to capture, the timing of that is kind of coincidental with the timing of finalizing the plan here.
Yeah. And I. Right, and, um, yeah, and, and I.
Do the best we can.
Right, I, I agree.
Uh, just something to think about, so we know that the township committee had an issue with a gun range that a resident was trying to put on a, their own property. However, we have the police gun range.
Mm-hmm.
That's not mentioned in here anywhere. And I'm just wondering, is that something that we should be thinking about as well? Because from a noise perspective, people can hear it. Its location is in a flood zone. Um, it, from what I've seen, I've not gone to it and actually stepped into it, only seen it from afar. It basically looks like just a bunch of containers.
Hmm.
And just wondering if, if we should be thinking about that as a side note.
Yeah, I don't know, where, where, where would you think that that should go? Can you think of a place that that should be discussed?
I just, I just see here that we have identified, uh, at fifteen fifty seven, the Long Hill Police Department over on Mercer Street. But maybe we make notation about an additional location, 'cause that's the police gun range, that's not a public gun range.
Right.
Right? No, you or I can't go there. But maybe we should notate it that it's there, because I didn't know it was there for the longest time.
Well, but are we considering that a critical asset?
I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't think, if we have an emergency or we have a major flood, I don't think they need to practice their shooting.
Let me, let me think about that as I'm reading through this, to see if there's a spot that it should be called out on.
Right. Right.
Well, what I'm wondering is, should it, what, do you know what it's zone, is it, it is?
Say again?
What, sorry, what zone it's in?
It's over by the, uh, DPW and, um.
So it's down near the.
Because like, is it something that should be put in one of the, the public zone or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably.
And what zone is that, that's over by the waste site? Because it's on the waste site property or adjacent to the waste site.
Well, if it's a public. If it's a publicly owned facility, it should be in a P zone, right?
If that's the zone it's in, then.
Well.
No, that we're recommend, we're ma- recommending a bunch of things that.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me think about that now that I've got a little context that goes with that.
Yeah. Because we're actually recommending now the sewage treatment plant to be in a different zone, since it's privately owned, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we have to be careful.
Yeah.
That's true.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, any other questions on the?
I need to read through it.
Climate vulnerability assessment, yeah, it's a lot, but.
That's fine.
It's very, it's, it's very interesting reading. I, I think it really is all very germane, especially some of the challenges.
I was, I was really impressed with it, I thought it was very well done.
Yeah. You know, one question more conceptually, I think, wasn't it after Sandy, do all of our gas stations now have generator, backup generators to pump gas?
That was my understanding that they're required to.
I thought they were too. I don't know if that's something that the town is checking.
Is that a state thing or? Just gonna say, like, none of them came to me for his own, 'cause they would've had to come from my side.
Right, to get a generator, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if that ever was implemented either. I don't know if the town's supposed to enforce that.
Before you though, too.
They would have to come to me, yeah.
Yeah, but, but, but before you were here.
Well, I've been here for five years.
Yeah.
Sandy, when you had generators.
Sandy, when you had generators.
Sandy was two thousand and ten, right?
What's that?
Is there, is there a database that has the generators listed?
Well, yeah, well, it's a.
Like when I got a generator on my house, I'd have to get it from.
Yeah, no, there's no database, no. No, there's no way to pull out.
Just, there's no way to pull that out.
Right.
No.
We can't pump any gas.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Or you can get the.
Very proactive.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I haven't.
No, but most commercial sites in town would require a site plan because the setback for commercial generators is seventy five feet.
Yeah.
From property lines, and majority of the property, the commercial properties in town have nowhere near that.
Yeah.
Right.
So, um, there's, there are a couple of commercial properties that I know that have done the conversion for portable generators.
Uh-huh, so they have a slab, a hookup.
So they, no, they don't even have that, so it's basically an electrical panel that's upgraded, and then they bring in.
Yeah. They bring in a generator with a, with a hitch, a hitch, yeah, yeah.
Correct, and then they hook it up at the time being that they need it, and then remove it when it's said and done.
The Swims-, Swimshot did a generator a few years ago, right? And that's right on, by the road.
Yeah. Right, right.
About seven, five feet.
All right, um, I'm gonna recommend, we got through a lot this evening, I think we've got a lot more reading.
Yes.
Editing, comments. As we discussed, you have through the end of the month, with the holiday, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You got your present, you got your reading material.
Yep.
Um, provide, again, by the end of the month, a scanned version of your notes to Liz. And then the committee will work with Liz to can, get this consolidated, uh, into another document, another, a second draft for people's review.
Wonderful.
But I would, I would ask that you spend the most time on the land you sell.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's the, that's where I wanna start.
Because I think that's, that is, that is the least.
But it's, it's really helpful to have it all together. I mean, that's what's really nice too, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
And you'll send that.
And then I'm just gonna make a special emphasis too, I mean, begin to comment and make comments as you go through your, um, uh, the text in regards to the figures. Don't forget about the figures, 'cause those are very important as well. Especially if we think we're missing a figure that we would like to emphasize a certain concept.
But Liz has gotta send out the appendix again.
Oh, yes.
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 So you'll se-, you're sending out appendix, uh, the appendices, right, that we have?
Yeah, but you really are want A, right? That's the demographics.
A. A, the demographics.
And the, um, land use tables where we.
Okay.
Yes.
Changing the zone, you remember that stuff?
Yeah. The land use tables are important, and that may not even, I mean, we could even make those just into specific. We could decide if we wanna just make that into a table that is, complements the text.
That's how we did have it.
Right, is just have that as a table, not even an appendix, just have it.
That's how we did have it.
Right.
Okay, so you want, so, I'm sorry, just so I understand, it's the tables where, like Dennis had done the, yeah, okay, okay.
I don't. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But we had very specific changes.
And you wanna put those back in?
I, I don't know, guys.
I'm not saying, just send us the appendix, and it's, and we can figure it, I don't mind either way.
I mean. I guess we can determine, we can make a decision. Let's, let's get all the information together.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right, I, I'm not.
Just as Dennis mentioned earlier, we're making decisions holistically on what elements to, to deal with. I think we can make a decision on that table.
Yeah.
That we spent a lot of time over the years developing, right?
Yep.
So.
This is the copy we're editing right here, we're not gonna get another version?
Correct. Yep, if you've got your copy, I assume everybody's got their copy, mark away.
Okay.
Now, Liz, my handwriting is particularly bad.
Yeah, well, that's.
Do, do you wanna send me the Word doc version, or would you rather not? Or do you don't want to do that?
Yeah. I can do, I can send it to everybody, a Word version.
Would you mind, because my writing is.
Okay. If you send it to the.
I've seen your writing.
Yeah, it's.
So please use track changes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and save it as a separate doc, you know, a separate document.
And then do you save it as a PDF and send it back to me, actually? Do you mind?
Yes.
All I'm gonna do is write a comments section, I'm not gonna change the text.
Okay.
I'll highlight it in a comments box and say, see.
But that's a good idea, so just, if you're gonna do that, use a PDF so we don't get Word versions mixed up.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. Any other business for the evening?
I have, uh, nothing else unless somebody wants to do a karaoke number for the next thirty-five minutes.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna see me write or sing? That's the only thing you don't wanna do.
Thank you, everybody. I, I, I thought everybody did a good job. This is not an easy process. I appreciate your, your comments.
Very good.
Thanks. Good.
Uh, Deborah, do you have anything else?
I only have to say happy holidays to everybody.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to.
And happy new year.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Good night.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.